I'd like to call the meeting of the Frontier Regional School Committee to order at 6:00 on September 12th. And I'd like to start with a thank you for the past five years, for everybody's support. For me as chair, if you did forget, let me remind you. I'm the one with a big smile on my face because I am stepping down from chair. So we'll have to fight it out. And I'm sure whoever replaces me will be wonderful because we're a really good team. So with that, I will turn it over to the superintendent who can open up the nominations. Thank you.
I'd like to call for nominations for chair, please.
I'd like to nominate everybody.
There you go.
And by way of motion, have a paper ballot just right away. Top three candidates have a one-paper ballot runoff. Five minutes. Top three candidates that accept.
I think we had, but we also had a nomination.
I have seconded that nomination.
That was the close nomination, and I have to vote.
No, you don't. You do?
Yeah.
Oh, that's right. I'm sorry. Sorry about that. I'm so kind. On the paper, turning the chair over to the president of the Chair of the Frontier Regional School Committee over to Mr. Bob.
Yes.
We're an hour. I packed light.
Nice to have you here. Thank you.
Hey, nice seeing you.
Yeah, I mean, do we continue with nominations for vice chair?
Yep.
Okay.
Need nominations for vice chair?
Nominate William Marapies.
Second.
I would be good with that, yes.
Nominations be closed.
All in favor? We got a vote on.
We did. It was unanimous. They closed. Now we can vote on the actual election.
So all in favor for Bill, raise your hand. Thank you.
Well, thank you for making note of that, Bob.
Since I'm chair, maybe looking for a new secretary unless Dr. Carey would like to take it over unless somebody else wants it.
Yeah, pay $700, anybody's interested.
Interested?
What, are you sick?
So Dr. Carey is asking to take it over? Is that what I'm hearing? Do you volunteer?
Unless somebody else wants it. Wants it.
I second the nomination of Dr. Carey.
Is that actually a nomination?
I don't know.
I could still be secretary if in the unfortunate situation that I would be out.
Would you like to be backup secretary, Mr. Smith?
Not that either.
Okay. I'll be backup secretary.
So, well, can, because I would.
I mean, I could be backup secretary.
I would volunteer to be as well, backup secretary. I think, do we just need to accept Dr. Carey's and then?
I think as a volunteer, do we need to even vote on it?
We technically have the Phil position.
Yes.
Okay. But it's pretty hard to hold two elected offices.
No, it's not.
I nominate Phil Cantor as secretary.
Who's nominations be closed?
All in favor?
Are you willing to?
Sure.
So Phil's going to be our backup secretary.
Yes, well, thank you. Yes, it needs to be a backup to a backup.
Good.
I think it's great to have Phil as your secretary.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, Phil for himself.
Who else would you vote for, right?
I was on the ballot.
Next thing is the Budget Subcommittee. As far as I know, Phil, you've been on the Budget Subcommittee?
Since Noah loaded the ark, yes.
Can I appoint you as the Budget Subcommittee person?
Oh, sure.
Phil Smith. And the Collaborative was led before, still is. Would you like it or would you like to pass it on to somebody else then?
I'm ready to pass it out. I'm going to sit back.
Bob, would you like to do it?
I'll take it.
Bob will be our representative for the Collaborative. Also, are you the representative to Mars?
Yes.
I love the way you put that. We always thought you were out in France, but I wasn't quite sure.
They never have a meeting, so you don't have to worry about it. We'll find out about it afterwards.
How many of us been on the Policy Review Committee before, representative?
I think Allen was on before.
Well, I did the policy, but I didn't know if there was anybody else other than myself from Frontier that was on the policy. Was it one from each town?
Yeah, one from each town. Allen.
Does anybody want to be on the Policy Review Committee?
I would be on the Policy Review Committee.
Thank you.
You will?
It's going to be a short.
Yeah.
Yeah. We did a lot a few, a couple of years ago, and all of a sudden, some of the changes are going to be minor, and Dr. Carey will talk about that later. The only other thing is, does it have building expiration? Those are four.
He just appoints those. That's his.
Mary, would you like to be on the Budget Subcommittee again?
Yep.
Phil, from Conway?
Yes, sir.
And since Keith is not here, we'll let Keith name him.
That's what you get for not showing up. You get a committee assignment.
Bob, would you like to be on the?
I'll get that.
Okay. Phil?
Yeah.
Judy? Myself.
We have one more thing, maybe the agenda later, but who's ever going to the Cape, you need a delegate.
Yep. We'll do that later. Okay. Let's review, approve the minutes from June 13th.
Second that motion, please.
Okay, Patty, it's your turn.
I gave you tonight's report as for the July to August period of FY '18. We are still working on pulling out FY '17, and I will get those reports out too, hopefully by the end of September. We are, right now, verifying that the accounts that we, we got everybody in payroll set up and that they're having their accounts. And we have scheduled our audit field work through the week of October 30th. So Scanlon will be here with us from October 30th through the week of October 30th through the 30th. And I do have a better day. Can I ask you one dumb question? No dumb question. How can somebody's salary be 32% out of whack in two months? Exactly, and that is what I have to sit down and say, this is where I budgeted them, where are they getting charged? The data clerk I'm referring to on the first page. That's why I have to look at each line individually. I have to go through this and then find two calls. I didn't mean to put you on the spot. Thirty-two just jumped up and bit me, so. I give payroll a list of accounts and names that I want them charged to, and then once they start rolling the first couple of payrolls, then I take this report and I verify that where everybody is, and we make the corrections, and then we do the reclassification. Even industrial arts teachers the same way. It's minus 23% already. And that has to have a budget reclassification because we only have one teacher within the budget, but now with the hiring, we have 1.33, so that's a budget reclassification that needs to be done. Instructional assistance, 20% in the whole. Which ones? Instructional assistance. The instructional assistance are the other one that we have to look at most closely. You can rebudget them one way, and then we have to wait until Mr. Menesto gives them their assignments. I get the assignments, and then we start moving people around to the right buttons.
Right. Just to emphasize that industrial arts is not a new position, it's not a new hire, it's a reclassification, increasing enrollment in the high school classes. There's been an increase in enrollment in industrial arts, so I'm shifting another teacher to pick up the middle school exploratory that was taught by him, by Lopinoi, and so it's shifting over. When one was down, picking up, and we're classifying it under where they're coming out. So it's not a new person.
One more, and I'll stop annoying you. Football expenses, 72% over budget? Five. That will be accurate. The grand company bills have come through, so I'll just check with Mr. Sanderson and see what is going on with that number. If you only get $5,000, you can't spend $8,600. It just done went that way. So he also has an account with during student activities, and something might have gotten miscoded and not been paid out of the student activity account and should have been, so I will definitely.
So can I just say something? Patty, last year, you did a really good job when there were guarantees and things of kind of doing just a one-pager of.
I'm sure.
Yeah, so that was a, I'm sure.
I just didn't have time for the first month, so next month.
I heard you say that you had a family emergency, but I think that, you know, that helped.
Could I ask about, on page two, something that apparently wasn't budgeted for at all, but now shows a $71,000 charge, salaries, team meters?
Again, that is where she belongs. I don't want that to be a budget error and a budget input error, and I'll have to go look for that salary. It's actually, I'll go find that salary, so that could be a budget input error. So this is, got to go through this, but it's fine, two's calm. But we're still closing '17, so we just got '18 open. So we're in that transition period. We're going to find lots of errors.
I just asked about the $71,000 one.
This doesn't encompass the assessment.
Right.
Does anybody else have questions for Patty? And thanks for asking about that, because that did help us a lot last year with that separate sheet.
Yeah.
Do we have any public comment tonight? Why don't you stand up and come over here and state your name, please?
Sure. My name is Erwin Moore. My student is Ben Orde Jr. The committee's prepared to actually go request and not comment. Unexpectedly, this August, my daughter, who lives predominantly with her mother, relocated into Vermont, which means really she shouldn't be here, except the committee can vote to approve her presence and generate a bill warning according to Chapter 71, Section 6A of Mass Law. I'm here to make that request.
We must have a due to a situation, we have to vote for acceptance of the state's salary.
I mean, I can't talk about a student open meeting, so I can only confirm that that student, you talk about is enrolled here. I don't know anything about the address that has been brought to my attention, so I can look into that.
We'll check into it, okay, in a minute. Do we have your name, number, and phone number and name?
Mr. Menesto, sir.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else out there for a public comment?
Yeah. My name is James Mieske. I have a question about the use of school facilities, specifically for the committee at this point. It says you're supposed to review these every five years. I was wondering if you had.
Is it a policy or is it a procedure?
The school committee will every five years review and approve a fee schedule for the use of school facilities. This is amended 1989.
We have not in the last five years. We did, I think, my second or third year, they talked about raising fees, and we tabled it, I remember. That talking, that was '09, maybe? Going off my collection now, but.
So there's no.
So it has not been reviewed.
You have no way of knowing whether these actually cover the cost of the school in hosting?
Are you talking about athletic fees and?
No.
Or rentals of the building?
Yeah. And you're the principal. I've tried to get in contact with you. My other question is, my specific issue is with the church that's here on Sunday. Is the rental agreement and this facility request, is that available to review and public? Because I would like to have.
It's your little.
You would have to send that request to the paperwork of the record, which is for Frontier and myself. And when you ask me for the paperwork, I will compute a cost to get that to you, and when we receive your check from the record, then we can turn it over.
Okay. I'll talk to you after to contact. I was told to contact the principal, so that's why.
I emailed you, sir.
Yeah. I knew this meeting was here, so.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay. Do we have a student advisory?
We haven't.
Not yet, okay. Unfinished business. We're bringing up policy EEA, student transportation.
We talked about this in our last meeting. It really doesn't impact the high school, middle school. However, I think we are changing the policy. We're adding a statement in the policy that states grade K-3 students will not be released from the bus unless a parent, guardian, or designated caregiver, or adding or sibling in grade four or higher with parent or guardian approval is present. So if the child in grades K to three has an older sibling in grade four, five, or six, the parent agrees, then the parent or guardian or caregiver does not need to be at the bus to walk the child home or to the house or whatever. If there are other K's, the bus drivers must make eye contact with an adult for the child unless parent agrees that a child in fourth, fifth, or sixth grade can take the child into the house. And so clearly, the high school, middle school students aren't on the bus with K-3 students or four, five, or six. However, we would just like to have presented this to the committee and ask them to vote on it, the statement being, or sibling in grade four or higher with parent, guardian approval.
Yeah. Written approval, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, who's the abuser of this thing? The bus driver?
He gets the big bucks. He's the only one of the majority that.
Anybody can rock up to the bus driver, though. Yeah, I'm supposed to take care of X, Y, or Z.
No, no. The child is on the bus. So dear field, the kids get on the bus, so the kindergarten, first, second, third grade, older sister is in fourth grade. Bus driver knows family, knows child, knows older sibling. Parent has sent in a note, a written note to the principal asking this. Bus drivers are there. Bus driver, okay, I'll ring you soon. There you go. They know the students. There's no strangers. They know students and families.
I'm just not sure that the Frontier Committee is equipped to vote on this without some input from the elementary committees, because, like you said.
We voted on it weekly in June last year.
We did.
Come back to us last night with a little thing stating.
The written?
The written part.
Okay.
So we already voted on it, but we had a vote on the little written part, so.
Okay, well, thank you for saying that. I didn't remember we voted on it.
Essentially, what's happening is, it's been in a practice, it's been the practice for many years, that the parent sends in, you know, John, we can get off the bus for Bobby, no problem, and we've been allowing it, but we haven't, it's not in our policy, and we want it specifically written in our policy that this is something that we do agree to, and parents have to get permission, and that it's something that we do. We're doing it as a practice for many years. So these are all the kids, kindergarten, first, second, and third grade. They can get off the bus with their older mother or sister. Kids and parents.
Did you and Bob have that type of relationship when you guys took the bus?
Yeah.
Sleepily.
Well, essentially, most of our bus students.
Well, it works. I was coming down the stairs, trying to get out to the bus when Zach was in elementary school. The bus took off, and they kept him in it because they didn't see, and down the road it went, because I didn't get there, and they did not drop him. And I give them credit for that. There's nobody there to take him, and they didn't drop him.
And you have a second over here?
You have a question?
I do, and I was going to second.
Judy seconded it?
I did.
All in favor? Update on the Building Exploration Subcommittee meeting on August 22nd.
Okay, so we had some exciting moments, and we've been doing a lot of work. Bob Lusko, the committee, Bob Decker, Phil.
Pence.
And we've been having meetings. And so the update from the summer is regarding the removal of the oil tank. Coal Cut was paying $4,200 to pull the tank. LSP SWCA, some official company, completed the remediation of the contaminated soil for $6,900. And then Coal Cut was paid $5,000 to close up the remaining coal. So the approximate cost of the entire operation was $16,000. But now, we're good to go in that case. Lynn, I attended the Towne-Waite Select Board meeting on August 9th. At the meeting, it was discussed and recommended to us that due to the cross encumbrances on both properties, it would be more advantageous if Frontier Regional School District and the Towne-Waite lead work together to market the two properties concurrently. So for instance, the encumbrance that we have on our building lot is the entrance, the right-of-way to the ball field and the parking lot. And the encumbrance is that the Towne-Waite has, or that the Towne-Waite is a piece of property that we have, is the septic system. So it would lead to reason that the property would be much more attractive if we work together. And that's what Towne-Waite suggested. And I was charged by this committee to find out in June whether the Towne-Waite, a definitive answer of whether they want to receive the building back, and they do not want to assume responsibility for Frontier Regional School District's property, but will work with us again in meeting our respective, in marketing our respective properties. Phil Cantor made a motion to recommend to the Frontier Regional School Committee that we go ahead and develop an RFP on our parcel in conjunction with the Towne-Waite developing an RFP on their parcel concurrently to make the two parcels more marketable. That was seconded by Bob Decker, approved by the committee. We would like to bring forward to this committee that whether or not they would like to approve us going forward and working concurrently with the Towne-Waite on marketing the complete parcel lot, one and lot.
They are interested in marketing recreational space?
No. So this motion is brought forward with the approval of Brian, the town clerk, and Fred Orlaski, the selectman that was there. And the idea, we're not marketing the ball field. The idea is that this will make the property maybe marketable as for residential development, and that they could get two building lots if we work concurrently. And if somebody has, can do the disposal of the building for an economical thing. And those are lots of ifs.
Two building lots would have to include all of their portion of the land.
Correct.
I'm surprised they're even interested, because they're sinking money into turning that into a ball field. I'm surprised they're even interested at all in.
Ball field is an issue amongst some members of the Waitee Town Government.
Oh, I suspect it will, yes.
Which is one of the many reasons why any positive outcome is still.
Long ways away.
Yeah, only possible at this point.
So if we do this vote tonight, that just means that we back it. It doesn't necessarily mean it's going to happen, because Waitee has not.
Oh, I get that. I got that, yeah.
So I think ultimately, we do that?
I'll second it.
The thing about it is, how long do we want to wait for Waitee to dispose of this building? Because they want to have to vote either the board of selectmen or they're, it's ever charged in disposing their property, and it's probably a town meeting. When are they going to take it to town meeting? And does this board want to wait till spring? Because I've got some rumbling in the discussion that they would like to bring it to an annual town meeting before they decide what to do. And I just want to make sure that we're going to, we need to get rid of this building as soon as possible, and we've got pretty full to fill on it. And, you know, I just think that we need to move forward, and I don't want to be delayed for another nine months. I want to get it sold.
And just, the thinking was that it would be useful to test the waters, to see if there's any interest out there, and that that's what this would do. And that if there is any interest, it might help persuade some of the Waitee Town Government holdovers or holdouts that are currently predisposed to love that softball field enough to say no to whatever we might have in mind. So there might not be any offers, but the thinking was that we're going to do the PDF ASAP, like, right away, just to see if there's any interest, without regard to Waitee making a decision that they're going to accept the offer. I mean, that's a separate decision that Waitee can then make, but this will at least let us know if there's any interest, and then we can go from there.
Bob, since you know a lot about the D, is the parking lots part of the school, or is one of the parking lots part of the?
Parking lots are complicated by the fact that there's right-of-way stroll, and what it is, I don't know. Without having a full survey, I don't know, we have to have a full, complete survey done to actually delineate where the rights and way are, so that everybody understands. I mean, I've got a copy of the original print, and it shows parking lots, but I don't have all the details as to the seats and the bounds and everything else. And, you know, we know that it's a big encumbrance on the back lot for the softball field because of the septic system. And what it was, you know, I think, I don't really want to have to spend money heating it and maintaining it and ensuring it for another eight, nine months. And if we put an RFP out by ourselves, we'll get an offer, or we won't get an offer. And if we put an RFP out by ourselves, we'll get an offer or we won't get an offer. And then the board can make a determination whether they wanna buy it, sell it, or we don't wanna sell it. Or Waitley could step up and put their own proposal. And, but they still have a right to purchase it for a dollar more than whatever we get for an offer.
Do you have the, this survey note, what will that cost? Will that be more than heating?
Well, you asked a good question, right? As to where the, the thing is, what we would just do is make reference to the, the description on record.
We don't have a survey.
That's right. I would say if somebody wants to know exactly where it is, you know, you'd need the full survey, okay? And it may, you may already have most of it here, but the lawyer has to check all the meets and the bounds and whatever else. But you just make reference to the fact, to the deed we have and that should be sufficient.
My understanding is it's the farther parking lot, the parking lot away from the building itself, it's to the left of the driveway and the right way goes right into the, the ball field. And the thinking is, the idea is if they were, if someone were to buy that as a residential lot or small business, whatever's allowed according to Brian Domina, the town administrator, it would be not something many people would be interested in if there was a ball field, a right-of-way amusement for a parking lot in the ball field on, on the property that they want.
That's what we wondered, would pull parcels together, but Waitley didn't want to take and market the whole thing.
No, they want to work, they, they planned to, were hoping that they would work concurrently with us. If this school committee agrees that we can try to continue our efforts as something to work with Waitley, we might have a better chance of selling the parcels. But Waitley does need to decide what they want to do with the softball field. Idea here is possible if we move it to another venue, perhaps the elementary school, I don't know. So, but that's Waitley's piece, our pieces do want to work with Waitley.
Any questions?
I'm just hearing, so we're working with Waitley? We, we agree, working with Waitley and submitting an RFP?
No, if, are, are we, right now on the table, are we agreeing that if Waitley is willing or able, if they agree to work with us, do we have permission to work with them to sell the lot, the lots concurrently?
In other words, we're gonna put out two concurrent proposals, one for the Towne Waitley, one for the Frontier Regional School Committee, if that's the way the board wants to go, okay? And if one, you get a proposal on one and not on the other, you know, you just have to deal with it. But I wanna move on. I don't wanna.
Nice. That's, that's not where I thought you were going with this when we started this conversation. I thought they were trying to work with us so we could put the whole thing out as a package.
That's exactly correct.
So two concurrent, two concurrent?
No, they're not two. They can't be two. There's either, if they're gonna do it all together, it's gotta be one. Is it one or is it two?
We're each, because they're separately owned, we're each issuing proposals concurrently.
But they're single.
I understand that. There are two pieces of property, but neither one of them is marketable without the other.
Correct.
Absolutely. Forget it. It's not gonna happen. You're gonna buy something where you set the tank is on somebody else's property? I don't think so, Tim. So you gotta put, they've gotta put, we've gotta work with, with Waitley together because they've gotta put the two pieces together to be able to sell them or it's not gonna work.
Do we know how much it would cost to tear down that building?
Let's go through that. Bob Lesko, thank you, obtained an estimate between fifty-eight thousand and seven thousand, seventy thousand for the cost of demolition of the building. And that is to be the hazardous sources as well.
Remediation of hazardous material might make a difference. Actually, what they can with demolition material is a huge difference. There's two ways to demolish that building. One is to break a lot of it up and rip it whole and the other is to fuck it all away. And, you know, in talking to demolition contractors, he said it's pretty simple practice to get all the hazardous material out and metals and that sort of thing. Put the mason ring and the bubble and that sort of stuff and grind it up and back into holes. So you don't end up with your dirt there, but you end up with a marketable. So if there's some variables of how the, how we would make a decision about.
So I, I would just like to say, that's fantastic. I, and I, from the discussion with the Waitley Town people, the thinking was that if the demolition could be under a hundred thousand dollars, that the, it could be an economically feasible proposition for a developer. So if that's the case, then we should all rejoice. We might actually be able to get rid of this thing.
Seventy thousand dollars.
Of course, part there.
Well, could we?
The develop, I mean, that would be part of, that, that would be what the developer would pay. They would buy the parcel and then do the destruction. The, the purchase price of the parcel would reflect the fact that.
Right.
But considering that we were predisposed to give it away for a dollar to the first person that walked in the door, that would be a.
Spend seventy grand and then try and sell it?
No.
No.
As long as that's upfront, that's a possibility.
So.
They don't necessarily have to throw it down either.
And this, this information might help as well. I'll just add in this and then we can go back to the. Patty Kavanaugh has procured a template of an RFP and has sent it to our attorneys who developed an RFP for our proposal, just ours. If the school committee agrees to move forward with the RFP, the plan is to share the preliminary RFP with the subcommittee next week, first for their preview and then bring it forward. But if the school committee wants a copy, if everyone wants a copy, they can send it to you tomorrow. So there is an RFP out there, but it needs to be studied by the subcommittee to be sure.
But it's only for the frontier side.
It's gonna be a standalone RFP. The petition we're asking for tonight and the motion on the table is, would, would this school committee allow us to work concurrently with our single proposal, our single RFP and Waitley, Waitley's RFP if we?
There's a motion and a second.
Second. Any other, any other, any other discussions? All in favor? Next is leftover funds for the athletic light fund for term repairs to the track, new track, and who's got that?
We had a meeting of the athletic light, we actually had a meeting with Bob Smith and becoming Darius, Mari Sanderson, and Bob Lesko to discuss specifics about the track. And I'd like them to talk about, there are short-term repairs that can be done. However, there is some long-term needs and is one of you folks who would wanna like to be on the topic?
I can't picture Waitley about the bigger picture of like Bob's building, the light on two years. But basically, you know, once we, once we have the initial global spend out of one-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand-dollar for the light fund, put a two-inch overlay on the track, and we tried to contact, contact, contract, and it's in that parking lot, we look at. Bob, when you got one person from Cape Town Island, Dennis, and they came out, looked at it and said, because of some of the issues in current overlay, they felt that overlay on the track surface on the listing, asphalt base, but that one, you can use a little denton's area and asphalt base. They estimated that it'd be six hundred thousand dollars. So we sense, and, but they also said they, oh, they get another couple of years out of, out of the track by doing ten or fifteen thousand dollars a year. So what we're looking at now is for commission to do that amount of years from the money we have and then to decide whether, I, I've already, I've watched the track, one, one designer who actually did the project, I, I didn't realize it. I was looking for different people that have expertise in, in the project that want and, and was recommend, I got a recommendation from Clark, and they actually did the repairs to our athletic fields, bring it back, they originally built, they did that. And one of the people came out here, dedicated to me and basically said that he would help us out by doing some preliminary estimating, and put together a budget for us about, we need to make a project first. He also suggested that there may be a way to continue using a, a process here, but a public, you know, a, a process where we didn't have a good project.
Oh, you have some consortium?
Yes. And so I'm waiting for more information on that. But the real issue is we, if we have to pay somebody to design the track, ten percent of a sixty thousand dollar project, a six hundred thousand dollar project would be a rated fifteen or sixty thousand dollar, I don't think we're ready to ask for that yet, but I do not really like to receive, you know, fifteen thousand dollar project that Bob talked about with the representative from Cape Town, and in that case, crack that and some areas for the runway.
Phil, in some of the light times, you're voting?
Sure. One of the things for those of you that were on the committee when we built the school, Christoph Eldridge from Cape Town Island, Edison Track, said that the track was well constructed. He did not cheap out on the way. One of the things that complimented us on was the fact that our track's surface is narrower than the subsurface. The subsurface is about two feet wider on, all the way around the track, on the straight lane and on the turns. So that was good planning. He says that Christoph thought that the problems with our track have arisen from wear and tear much more than weather, although there are cracks underneath that are probably caused by water and freezing and bombing, just as any highway is. I also spoke to Maine Traffic Fitness and both Maine and Cape Town said that it was astounding that we've got twenty years on the track, that it was an astounding thing because it's basically not heard of. They also said that no track surface is going to guarantee work on top of the surface that we have without doing exploration to find out what's going on underneath. So then your investment of a great deal of money would not proceeding guarantee that it would last. Whereas both companies said that if you went into a deeper project, then you're looking at a twenty-year investment, which is what we had on the original. We did resurface it once, seven years in. So that was about four, five, something like that. But we've gone a long, long time without doing anything in surfaces. So your inside lane, lane number one, everywhere you have the universal start and finish line, everywhere you have the starting line, there've been tens of thousands of starts from lots in spots on the hundred meter line, on the hundred-ten meter line, on the universal start and finish on the two hundred, so that you've got wear and tear. Our runways basically, since our athletes are trained to do so, run in the same places all the time, so that you get each runway, the poleball runway and the long triple runway, have got wear and tear that is just not from weather but from use. So I thought that it was really positive, Darius was there, I thought it was a really positive agent because it was good to know I was on the building committee and it's really good to know that we invested wisely and did a good job designing it well. But we're at the point now where you have to make a decision about twenty years and not some short term. Our, I didn't realize that our track was meant to be permeable enough to allow water in and then evaporate out. Any sealing or putting another inch on or two inches would create a sponge effect, he said, because it's, it's supposed to be able to breathe, it would breathe and absorb less than it has. So that that would not be recommended and pretty soon you'd start to see bubbles on your surface. So that's why he said that this is probably a more involved project. And Bob's contact, that Clark, Clark are the people that came in and when the original drainage didn't work, they're the ones who built up the football field and put a crown in it and also we did all of the other surfaces to get it to drain out the, the street drains, the way it was originally designed to do. And, you know, Clark thought that one of the things that was possible is that the surface has gotta be removed, the track running surface has gotta be removed and that they could scarify as they do on ninety-one. Instead of tearing all, all of the subsurface, they would scarify it and, you know, reprocess that material and be, perhaps be able to do something to it now. But again, it's gonna take an extra, the seals up. But I think that everywhere there is that we can't resurface what's there and that original surface has gotta be pulled out, you know, something remedies has gotta come down to the subsurface. But it was really good to hear that they did it.
I'll bet the chair.
How much time would ten to fifteen thousand dollars give us to?
Well, in talking with, with Christoph, I mean, well, A, it depends on what kinds of winters we're gonna have. So we have a black track on which has absorbed an awful lot of ultraviolet light over the years that has a tendency, he recommended that we switch colors. And I don't know if Bill, Mary, and others who here remember, but the original idea of having a red track for our school was like a thirty thousand dollar add-on. Modern technology makes it, said five, six thousand dollars to make it red, something that most tracks are bred because they, they're better with ultraviolet. Although the black is really good for us here in the north because it melts snow quicker. As soon as a little piece of black starts to show, the rest of the track starts to melt. But I, I think the idea of looking, there's also now an eco-friendly surface, which is better for the, the application of the workers who apply it, it's also better for the environment overall. So the technology since we put it in in nineteen ninety, has advanced a great deal. So there are lots of exciting things to look at.
So ten to fifteen thousand would give us a couple of years or?
That's, and I would say from being at the meetings that that's, that's limping it through that second year. You know, you're patching, they're patching the cracks and then when you patch a crack, you're gonna have cracks on each side of the patch and then, you know, those kind of things. So that's, you know, basically we can get two years out of that and then we gotta, at the end of those two years, timeline-wise for the school, I mean, we need to be going into the project at the end of those two years of whatever we decide to do.
The original application effects of this, the track, the track arrived in two trailer trucks, it arrived in that, it was mixed on the site and applied much like they applied the surface of a highway. But at that time, applicators were always so wide, so there's a natural seam between the range, between lanes three and four on the turns and four and five on the straight line. There's a natural seam and that seam is beginning to show everything. Not gonna be able to stop that migration. Covering it over, it's still gonna migrate underneath the cover. So things like that. We've addressed many of the cracks in that center line over the years. We've done a remediation of those. There are a few more that need, there are some bare surfaces and I think the pressure to start in there with a hundred meter, a hundred-ten meter, especially where there are hurdles, needs to be beefed up because it's, it's pretty bad and that's a safe, that's gonna be unsafe. What'll happen over the two years is as the surface continues to deteriorate, the runways continue to deteriorate, officials will, they have the responsibility and the right to say that the particular venue is not usable. So that in the middle of the evening, they can say that we can't run the long jump, the triple jump, because the surface is unsafe and that it'll only take four days to flush. That's just the way it goes. So there are things that we really need to get on. So there are things that we really need to get on that'll get us through to the point, hopefully, if we decide to make it a bigger project, it'll get us to the point where we should also say, one of, and we asked about that, if there's any discount in doing it in the off season, because their big season is from May through September. That's when those track application companies are the visions. I think Cape Town, they were doing 20 projects. That's a lot. And he said, no, there's no discount, but there's a premium that's attached to it for the busy season, which means, thinking if you did it in October, November, September, October, November, you wouldn't pay that premium. So technically, there's a discount, but he did not call it a discount.
Patty, best guess estimate, time estimate for pulling off the bond, the bond issue for the larger picture here, for all the other stuff that Mr. Wlesko's got in his Easter basket over there?
Well, that's next on the agenda to talk about. And I've updated the number to include the track going from 110,000 to 600,000. So that's our next piece. But I do want to say that we threw the note, I had it up at the meeting early last June, and you had approved 135,000 available funds. There's only $85,764.65 in the line account.
And we knew that.
And we didn't have to do the 135, but we do have plenty of time to crack it until we get to the bonding.
As well as the fellow from Cape Town Island, the fellow who was helping to factor it, basically said, because the district's willing, if you put any nuts on how it's going to crack it here, 20 years on, it's been numerous, but you do that kind of thing. And they were horrible.
Well, that's probably because we have a good track coach.
You're here.
What you do in 30 is get to be no longer using the money.
But the projected free cash.
It's not as good as you're hoping.
And the scale of what we had in the past years is 10%, 20%?
I have no idea.
The 19 that we spent, or 16 or 18 on the other thing, that came out of what we thought would be left over, I presume?
That's why I'm still, I just got the co-cut bill, so that's why I'm running without. My bills for September are still entering the office, which is not a good thing to be happening. And that part of it, when we, when I looked at the projections back in June, I was assuming that we had paid all of our bills from January through May. And that wasn't the case. Apparently, with our move, once our forwarding address expired, we weren't getting our invoices. So I was looking at, I was looking at information with a lot of unpaid bills because we don't have a purchase order system to uncover them. So we are really at the eight ball, and you can tell by the number of June warrants that I sent out to you, how many June warrants we paid.
So do we need a motion on spending up to, out of the light fund for the repairs on the track? We're going to have a cap of 15,000, 16,000? Is that what the vote's going to be for, the leftover funds?
The vote says to use the leftover funds in the athletic light fund to finance short-term refurb repairs to the track and to hire a designer to provide specifications for a new track. But I don't know if we can do the second part until we talk about the bonding issue.
So we're going to spend $15,000 to try to fix it, make it safe, and hopefully, our conscious, we have to, so vote.
Wait a minute now. Second, for discussion purposes. I, you can't attach that second thing to that motion. And to hire a designer to provide the specs for a new track.
No, it's not.
You've got to take that out of there. Because, but that's what it says right here that we're voting on. You can't.
Spend the $15,000.
Period.
Short-term repairs to the track.
Do we have to do that?
No, that's what his motion should read.
Motion to use the leftover funds at Athletic Field to finance short-term repairs to the track.
Okay. Do you want to give it up to exceed that much?
$15,000.
$15,000.
Does that sound good? If they want to put it back to exceed Bob's bill, do we want a $15,000, $16,000, $17,000?
I would strongly suggest a couple of dollars, I think we've only had something of a lock there, we say, we think it would be $20,000 and exhausts and the prop.
So why don't we say 20, leaving a 65 when we get to the piece of the design? Not to exceed 20?
Isn't that what you said, Mr. Dedek, not to exceed 20?
I think that's what I said.
All in favor? Thank you.
Summer. The fund phase two.
Under new business discussion items, summer building maintenance update. Oh, excuse me. I'm sorry. Update on proposed bond requests, improvements, maintenance, frontier, we know buildings in fields. For Patty?
Sorry.
So I gave you a sheet, several pages, legal landscape. And I started with the information that was requested last June when we were at the $2.9 million, and Mrs. Raymond had asked for a 10 and 15-year scenario versus just a 20-year. So I provided that. So since doing that, the track conversation came up, and the track, what we had on the project list at 110, and we needed to bring it up to what we now are thinking is 600,000. That starts on page eight of 14, is the new project list with the new amount. So if we were to add the track in, if you look on page nine of 14, that would bring our total projects to $3,434,340. The banker is telling us, take out your five years and find that year budget. Take out the 20,250, and that would leave us the amount to finance less the five year, that would be $3,414,090. Now, when I asked her to do these scenarios with us, we had a very interesting conversation about the life of the assets because, oh, sorry. Now, the majority, a big part of this is now the track. Now, is the track going to last 20 years? It's going to do 30 years. We're limited to the town's limit, which is 30 year. But what they are seeing coming down the line from DOR and Bond Council is that even though there isn't 30-year limit, they're only letting finance up to the true life of the asset. So roofs, they used to bond over 30 years. Where you only get a 20-year warranty, you're only going to get a 20-year loan. That's all DOR, Bond Council is going to do. So we looked at this as a 10, a 15, and a 20-year scenario. And on the 10 and 15, we looked at it two ways. One, where we would borrow, just do the BAN, the bond anticipation notes for two years, and then do eight years of financing. Or we do the two years and then 10 years. So that there's two scenarios for the 10 and 15, and one scenario for the 20-year borrow. And the effect that each of these amounts would have on each town for each year of borrow. If that is what we're looking.
Really call a BAN.
I'm sorry.
The schedules that you provided in pages nine through 14, I don't see the 20-year option.
Okay, the 20-year option is going to be on page 14 of 14.
Two plus 18 makes 20.
A BAN is a bond anticipation note?
I know.
So it would be two years of BAN and 18 years permanent bond. And when we look at the 20-year, when we look at the 20-year financing options, the 10-year assets are only financed for 10 years. The 15-year assets are only financed for 15 years. And only the 20-year assets are financed for the 20. And we questioned when we were reviewing this, and I believe, again, it was the wisdom of Mrs. Raymond, asked us, if we were to do this for 20 years, are we going to be in the same spot in 20 years? And the answer is yes. If we do not fix our original agreement, we will be in the same spot again in 20 years. So my recommendation to this committee is that we set a deadline for voting on this, so that if we're going forward with this, we'll get to, we'll be done, and telling the towns in January, town, annual town meeting, we're going to be borrowing, looking to have you approve the borrowing. And if they don't do it this year, then we've got next year with the track, because we've got a two-year life. So I think that we should really look at setting a deadline. And I would really recommend that, at the same time, we reopen the regional agreement, amend it for capital improvements. And while we're at it, open didn't exist then either, and now it does. And maybe by doing both of these things consecutively, we'll be in a better spot in 20 years, 10, 15, 20 years.
You thought all that about?
She did. You know the question?
Small but mighty, yeah.
We also need additional data, but we need to straighten out some other issues to deal with our agreement that aren't really, aren't gelling the way they should. One deals with the school charter school and what have you, who pays for those children that aren't included in our total enrollment figures. Right now, everybody's paying, but it's not being charged to respective towns of where those students are going.
Frontier's paying for it.
The whole of Frontier's paying, where you've got a disproportionate number of kids, where students leading and going to charters from some of those smaller towns, it's disproportionate on the cost of being allocated. So that needs to be treated. And there's a couple of the things that I'll discuss with you, you know, in a different setting. But, you know, I'm just saying, we need to look at the whole agreement and not just two issues that Patty mentioned. Although they're both very much on point. I just want to make sure, when we go, I want to make sure we get the whole thing in and not have to go back in another fight.
I agree.
And the other thing is the board, in addition to wisdom and Billy, if I'm wrong, the board, if we decide to hope to incur the debt, and if we do our strategies right in dealing with the finance reason, the selectmen of the four towns, they can allow it to happen without bringing it to a halt.
Yes, that's correct.
And, which is nice to get them on board and let them buy into it before we end up having, you know, it all go to hell, which is pretty.
Just adding on to that, I think that we need to be careful. This is important. And all those other things that Patty's talking about and what you're talking about in terms of changes in the regional agreement are important. But I guarantee you, if we try to do all of that at once, three-quarters of that crowd is going to be asleep within five minutes, and the other quarter, their eyes are going to glass over like, what the hell is going on? And I don't want to poison this with all the other stuff that goes with it. So we need to be careful. Town meeting can only digest so many things at once, and people just like, you're done. But I want to make sure this one isn't the last one, and all the people who were there to help us have gone home because they've been along this thing anymore. So we need to be careful how many things we pile on there. And what you're saying is right on point. If we could get the selectmen on board ahead of time, and we can vote to incur debt right now, if we do it today, if you wanted to.
We've got to get it on each other.
Yeah, but all I'm saying is that they have 60 days, I think, to call a meeting, or they can let our approval, our incurrence of debt stand. It's up to them. So, but I wouldn't spring that on them.
Don't spend.
Because then you're going to have four meetings. So you're absolutely right. You better take it slowly.
You've got to talk, so we're trying to make it there right here. The goals aren't, that's not easy. But I think they can see the cost benefit in trying to do it, do it right.
Yep.
We just have to celebrate. No, we don't need to shove it down the throat. And we also.
Bill?
I believe it's going to be really difficult to get said amendments passed at town meetings. I think having a separate capital budget is a great dream for all of us. But in essence, you were talking about asking voters at town meetings to give up some of their democracy. Right now, they have direct veto power over any spending that we have. And what you're talking about is a method that a capital fund could be obtained or built up without the direct say-so of the voter as to each expenditure and each item. And I think that people are.
That's the selectmen's choice, not ours.
And that's the most, because we're, when I speak to my colleagues, we're the only one that has a silent agreement on the regional agreement as to capital expenditure.
And I think it's because the people that put this together in the 50s really believed in democracy and really believed in the consent of the governed and wanted us to make good presentations and convince them.
But the choice of whether to involve the townspeople in the vote is the selectmen's decision, not ours. All we can do as a board is incur the debt. And then the ball is in their court, you do what you want. You want to call a meeting, call one. If you don't, in 60 days, the debt is legal, and away we go.
You know, you have to realize that when the frontier regional school was created, it was one of the first regional schools created. It wasn't the first, but it was one of the early ones that was created. And these are some of the things that have developed over time. And Maine had had enough more thought as to the capital expenditures in life. But, you know, they did an excellent job of putting it together and solving a big problem way back there. You know, these are growing things and stuff, you know, the charter school and that stuff is all new in the 90s, and it's never been addressed.
It's not, it's not, it's not an end run. We're not trying to do an end run here around democracy. I disagree with that completely.
So this has yet on the agenda, first of all. So we have plenty of time to notify them that this is possibly what we're thinking.
You want to talk with them first before you put it on the agenda for, because you can kiss it goodbye if you don't.
Correct.
Let's get them to buy into it.
Oh, let's get their opinion.
Yeah. Maybe they got a better way.
How, and how we convert them into a right.
Would you do one town, I mean, each, go to each town, or would you bring them all together?
Why you? Yeah, I don't, I don't know.
So last spring, we attended the Deerfield Budget Committee, right? There were the representatives from Deerfield that attended. And, and we heard a lot of feedback at that point. I don't know if this committee can set that, that we each go to, each representative, the representatives of each town go to the budget subcommittees and.
Remember what happened the last time we tried and didn't get them all together first? Everybody voted on, it was something different with that capital menu we had a few years ago. Bob had two-thirds of a truck and three-quarters of a staircase and nothing. I mean, nothing worked out well because we didn't have it all together from the get-go.
Then a joint meeting makes sense.
Well, just, just to throw something at you, Wake Me's invited our school committee and Lynn and Patty, Patty too, on the 19th. They want to be on board way ahead of time with, with different things. The elementary end of it, probably frontier end of it too. So we have a meeting on the 19th already with the finance board. They want to, how can we work closer to us?
So that's a great example.
I would, I would think what we try to do is to get the representatives of the board selection, finance committee, each of the towns, here some night, and set up some sort of a formal discussion as to what our goals are, and find out what their ideas are, and how they best think we can go about solving these problems. And maybe we can get them to buy in to what we're doing. And so that we can go forward.
I agree.
I don't think it should be a surprise. I mean, the building's 20 years old. We were charged with taking care of it, which we've done a pretty good job of. But now we're at that 20-year mark.
There's time.
It's time.
Got to rewallpaper every single year.
We have a joint meeting in October. Maybe we should set this up for like, maybe sometime in the late October, since we only have, we have the one joint meeting and not five separate meetings. Maybe trying to set up a time in like the last week or two of October might be a good time.
Like a special meeting?
Yeah, call a special joint meeting.
Meeting, joint, you're talking about with the selectmen, not?
Right.
Not the union?
The selectmen of the four towns and the frontier school committee, and if they and if they wish to bring their capital, capital planning.
Not the union.
If you didn't want it to be a joint.
Right, that's, that's, when you say joint meeting, I get the-
Not the 27 and-
No, 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 I'm saying because we only have one meeting, one joint meeting in October, October might be a good month for us to have a separate meeting of the, I mean, with the town. There's on Tuesday, October 24th, and then Halloween is on Tuesday.
Oh, you can't do it on-
That could be fun.
We come across them?
I'm going trick or treating.
We do anything.
I like my gun.
Well, we know who you've contrasted. We know. So Tuesday, October 24th.
24th, I'm sorry.
So, but is that the night that the school committee, what are the select boards normally meets?
Is it a Tuesday?
Yeah. I'm like, it's on a day.
First and third, what week?
Deerfield's Wednesday.
Used to be, but they kind of-
It takes the first and third of October, then October 3rd is the first and the seventh.
There's five Tuesdays in October, so we got a better shot there.
So the 24th might work. 6 o'clock? Do you need to?
Could we vote, could we vote alternative days as well, just in case we need them?
Let's not.
Ironically, we give a finance seminar to those going off to college in the auditorium that evening. So unless anybody has a senior going off to college, it's the only conflict we have.
You know, maybe there's that week, the Frontier School is Wednesday. Not that, because the field is doing a lot of warming.
It's only if there's a, there's a conflict with someone who's going to the financial lady.
Good month to try to pull it off.
I can, I can.
Oh, okay. So the 24th is good.
It's the 26th you're talking about, right?
I was talking about 24th or 25th.
What time?
Tuesday or Wednesday, 6 o'clock?
Oh, you're looking at the wrong night, sorry.
October 24th is a Tuesday, and the 25th is a Wednesday.
Mr. Chairman, move for October 24th, direct administration to try to set up a meeting with representatives of the town select boards and finance committees to discuss the building issue.
With appropriate referrals.
And it would be, you know, the 24th is-
Get Bob your pizza or something, you know?
The 24th is appropriate, it is, you know, there you go.
Drive a second?
With you being the chair of the meeting and us controlling the agenda.
Yep. You as in him.
Yes, yes.
Yes. I figure you're kind of vacillating a little. Call a favor on the 24th, 6 o'clock, raise your hand.
It was 9:00.
Instead of this whole, whole package of information, this, these are the items that we're talking about, and we're not-
And we're trying to figure out how to pay for them.
I would invite, I would invite everyone, meetings, selectmen, and finance.
It wouldn't hurt to actually send each one a nice letter under the chairman's signature. We think it's that important, we want to make sure you understand.
We do think of that.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
That was impressive.
And at that, at that meeting, will we be discussing the 10, 20, 10, 15, or 20-year to that as well, that's what?
I would.
Yeah, I mean, I think that Phil's point, though, the meeting needs to be driven by the, by the committee, but with options.
We'll have plenty of handouts, just like this, I mean, it's the same thing, wouldn't you think?
I would think so, given that all, everything we got, they should have.
We'll try to get our CPs maybe, you know, to make sure there's at least somebody who can have a packet like this.
Oh, just making them?
Yeah.
Oh, it's not, that's all right.
We want to do it first time. We don't want to, we don't want to, we don't want to.
No, we don't want to cheap out on this one.
Now, can I go to new business?
Yes.
Summer building maintenance update?
Principal Manesto, Laura Ersbacher, who wants to do it. We have Principal Manesto down, right?
That's right. Did a great job cleaning the place, what'd they do fixing it?
I think, you know, summers are a busy time here with the study, they do all the heavy cleaning, and, of course, we've been doing a little bit of mistoring, we do a lot of molding and siding.
The new stair treads are lovely. The new stair treads are lovely coming upstairs, even there, they were noticed when we locked up, we don't have to worry about falling down.
And the red color is great. The red, the red color on the stair treads is very nice.
Or the black would have melted snow better.
Some of those came out real nice, we did a little bit of plumbing, we did a little bit of electrical, we did help out some of the other schools, some of their heavy things, at the end of spring, early summer, we get support to stabilize, they fall down and down, underground, you know, we have here, that had about nine hours of damage, whatever, it was just 10 years old, and it's time to deal with it, burn it all out, clean the tank out, done some work on it, we can say separated. The tank brakes of the state changed drastically, and we had kept our emergency generator, but had to get into a whole licensing program for it, so we separated the tanks, those small , we're going to down the tanks, and service our emergency generator, and also we advantage of that, we have some money that we're going to use to put a tank in the garage to fuel our motor, and that sort of thing, so we're using that tank for both things, and put that around, because now, we also, we tested, uh, protection, checked, concealed, so that that tank now is stable, it's a good tank to use. We've been doing some work, but our testing is there related to that, in the stair tread, some drop light faucets, we did a small lighting project underneath the softens, they've straightened over some of the replaced, missing out on our, you know, services, we've done some work, this work in central tank there, piles upstairs, we've got the new offices that are here, we are here, we miss it, we're just small, obviously, we missed it, so it was now in the central offices, over to the second floor, so we're just, that's really good, our school issues in the house. And, you know, I spend a lot of time fixing projects, we have a big, but it's been, in my opinion, it's been a busy, it's a successful campaign. Do you have any money left over? Actually, you did all those comparisons for statements the rest of the year.
You did a lot.
There's, you know, there's money, you mean that in the, in the central office, it was, you know, I don't think, you know, I know we haven't went over it, but, you know, we want some additional, we've been buying, we want a lot of, they sell new equipment, and we did really, really well on buying that, so we need to add it.
There's no, we got a bond, we had to add a different budget, so it was followed through free cash.
And everything that we've talked about, Bob and I were just whispering about it up here, the envelope and the windows and all that stuff, that's all rolled into the big guy down here underneath the pile of papers.
You voted to do a tier, the library roof media, we're moving on that, you gave us money through free cash to start the project.
Okay.
That project hasn't, it's been a busy summer, I haven't spent a lot of time on that, but my goal is to try to get that bid early this fall and get the project even done late this fall for first.
Because there was some sense of urgency to some of that, and I didn't think it was going to wait long enough for this whole bond thing to play out.
So you did, you gave us money to start it, and there's money to finish it, and the bond play out.
I mean, I forgot.
Yeah, we're just-
Plus, plus, once this gets fixed.
Just patching the leak, nothing.
But when are you going to, when are you going to be able to do the money that we had donated to us for the library? When will, when that, when that happen? After this gets fixed, the big picture?
It was kind of combined into, right now, if we can do, fix all the other things, and including the carpet in here, and then we can put it toward things that aren't, you know, you know, that make the space, et cetera. It's a, it's a good chunk of money, but it's not in the scope of the bigger project, $40,000 is just one small component of the much bigger-
But we don't want to spend that until other-
I didn't want to spend it then, you know.
Got everything fixed, right, yeah.
So my, my recollection was that we had broke the large project into steps, and we, the school committee agreed step one and step two, about $22,000, to go in through the windows and stop the leak so that no more damage would occur, and replace the ceiling windows.
Yeah. Over on charge. Thanks. Anybody else have any questions for Mr. Lesko or Darius? Place does look nice and, nice and clean, it always does, so. The stair treads are really impressive.
They were, I mentioned, I put them on the way upstairs.
We've got lots more of those to do. Personnel update, Darius, is that you? Is it?
I think your report's attached.
Well, I have my principal's report, but I didn't have a personnel report.
But it was in the agenda.
Yeah.
It was in the tab.
Oh, it's in there, good.
See?
Was it in there? I didn't see it.
Yeah, right here, yeah, I got it.
Okay.
Four.
I just want to take you out of minute.
Basically, the four new hires for the school year, replacing some retirees, see who they are, they're doing great.
Thank you. All right, M.A.S.C., Mass Joint Conference, November 1st, November 4th, be there or be square.
Who's going? You going, Rod?
Yeah.
I'm going.
Phil's going?
If you want to be the delegate, go ahead.
I'll be the delegate if you're, if you're not wanting to, but certainly, I attended the meetings the last couple of times, I'll volunteer to be our delegate.
Move to appoint Mr. Mayor Peace as the official delegate.
All right. Is everybody else going to the conference?
You can appoint an alternate also.
I don't know yet.
All right.
Yes.
With Mr. Decker as alternate?
Yeah, why don't we appoint?
He always goes.
Can you sign that?
Yes.
And Bob, you're assigned up too?
Yes.
You get to vote on that?
Yep, we just did.
I'm child caring, who's have been assigned.
All in favor? Thank you. Next, something very important, review the food service report.
And she's been sitting patiently waiting over there through all this-
She has a cool first name. Flurry, right?
Florrie.
Flurry, oh, still cool.
So I was in, we received the report at the end of July, I sent it all to you, the report on the food service, I sent that, I sent it to the whole 24 school committee members, we talked in the report that we hired, Patty was able to find an excellent consultant that analyzed our whole food service operation, and of course, we're losing money in all our schools, which is not uncommon, however, we are losing a lot of money in Frontier especially. So one of the recommendations that was in the, several recommendations to the debate, and we're following those, but one of those was to hire an interim food service director to put the procedures and the policies in place that would help us improve our lunch, our lunch buying, our lunch, our purchasing, our consistency, our, the claims that we filed with the state, collecting money, accountability, point of sale, definitely increasing our sales, and helping us stabilize our labor costs. So with that, we hired Florrie Page to be our interim food service director, and she has been working very hard at helping us stabilize. Just our recommendation is going, but right now, we have one, we had one food service director within three schools, and then we had lead people in the two other schools. And what this report is recommending is that we make the food service director one position for all five schools, and to share the cost like we do the other administrators, and in doing so, we would be able to, to, you know, have better purchasing power and be able to distribute the cost more evenly, and there were a lot of benefits, you have better menu planning, we've been getting knocks from Desi on some, some issues, both financial and programmatically, and expand, and try to expand our program and do it together instead of trying to drive, do it in five separate silos. So this is something that we're probably looking to want you to vote in October when you're all together, because as we, as Dr. Gary said, we've only done Florrie interim, we, we cannot afford to keep her for a full year, we need to get this up and running. And part of the reason we have been at such a disadvantage, Florrie and I, is that nothing's documented, there is not one document, or Florrie comes in my office and says, what did you do with this? I'm like, I don't know, but let's figure it out. And that, and it's been a lot of that, so we want processes that are documented, we want better food, we want to serve better products to our children. And one of the things that I just want to talk to you a little bit about that we've never done here, that the food consultant prior to Florrie pointed out, is that we're allowed to do something called diversion. So if we get commodities from the federal government, and they give us chicken breasts, we're allowed to divert that to Tyson, and they'll make us better chicken nuggets than we can buy, we're allowed to take some of our ground beef and divert it and have meatballs made, because maybe kids would eat spaghetti with meatballs more than they would eat spaghetti with meat sauce. And this is something that we've never, no one's ever taken the initiative, and this district is looking, diverting our commodities to see if that we, to have them converted into something that may be more palatable for the children. Because with children, they're very visual eaters, and we've got to, and we don't, we are not doing our share with presentation, and that's something Florrie's working very hard with here at the high school, especially with teenagers, they want everything to look like a food court, and we've been doing that, they've got an offer now of a pizza every day, or-
Three different, three different types of pizzas.
Three different types of pizzas, or they can make a sandwich, they, you know, they can have a turkey sandwich, or we're trying to become Subway, we're trying to compete with where the kids are going, and I think it's beginning to work, we'll see a little bit more traffic.
We're not doing pancakes with a side of broccoli anymore.
No more pancakes and broccoli, no.
So this is something that's really important in-
Pancakes with a side of broccoli, it was honest to God. Downstairs.
I thought it was a venue.
Real naval circle.
And Florrie's also been working more with our local vendors to get our fresh produce in our schools. So this is something that's very important, I think, for everyone to take into consideration that moving towards one director rather than five silos is probably the way we want to go. I don't know if there's anything you would like to add in?
I would just say that we are really focusing on the quality of the program and to compete with the local other merchants here, like Primo is our major competitor to our pizza, the kids are responding very nicely to the pizza. As we're looking at the commodity list, as Patty mentioned, we certainly can divert the product, but we also can work the manual around the products that are available to us, and I think in the past, we stopped- us, and I think in the past, we stockpiled the freezer with lots of stuff that we could get, but with no plan on how to use it. So, as I plan the October menu, we'll be looking at the items that are available in the September commodity list, and work those into the menu, or not take them, keep them in our freezer, because there has been a lot of, sort of, stash a good way for a future date that seems not to roll around. So, we're planning to use what we get, and use it efficiently, and we'll plan follow up. Also, I'm spending some time talking with the kids about the pizza. Today, I went around and talked with the kids about the type of ice cream that we're able to offer through the John Starker A-list, so that it's a product that will not be challenged when Desi comes in, but we think that the kids will be excited, they were very excited about it, and so they put into which types of ice cream we're gonna order for them.
Can we divert our, can we divert our chicken to Paul's Deli on Thayer Street, and let them turn it into whatever they turn it into, because I'll tell you what, that stuff goes out of there by the bushel, and it's our juniors and seniors that are carrying it out, they want that.
Not, you know. Cutlers, probably.
Pieces of chicken with some kind of a bread, and they put, honest to God.
No, I don't know that we can do it to.
Oh, you, you can't imagine, he might, I've caught him in there, he knows. He knows what I'm talking about.
It was the summer.
What we could do is file, like we've done with some of the other companies locally, and see exactly.
Well, buy a piece of chicken and have it analyzed for chemical content, to see what they put on it.
Or just eat it.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say, we could just chase that, but the intention is to keep the customers here, and to satisfy them, and hear their feedback. So far, it seems to be working, the numbers are significantly up for the month of September.
Are the countries buying it for themselves?
They are. And the point-of-sale system now is available to teachers, so they can put money down on their accounts, I don't know if they've ever used that in the past, but they can put money down on accounts, so that they can come in and use their ID for the meals as the kids can do.
Good.
And the point-of-sale system has expanded into all of the elementary schools as well, that's something else that we've worked on, getting up the money for the struggling school.
I know you talked about the elementary last night, with the credit card and stuff, it's tough for the four towns. Is it any different at Frontier? Can they use a credit card at Frontier?
No, not, no, not yet.
Not yet, okay.
But it's easier for us to put that in place than for a separate town. And initially, we're going to, Mr. Scott Hall, our technology director, has been busy rolling out technology for all our new self-identified eighth graders, but we are waiting on his calendar, because we need, what we need to do with that is compare, because the, the module that we get with the Meals Plus, I think, the product cost per transaction is high, and I'm not sure that parents would want to pay. So, we could look for another vendor, but if we look for another vendor that's cheaper, then we lose the point where parents could look online and see what their kids ate. So, it's, so Scott and Flori and I, and Dr. Carey, and, and Darius, need to sit down and figure out, which way do we wanna go with this? Do we wanna take the risk that the parents will pay the premium price, so that they can get an up close and personal view of what their kids are eating and when? Or do we just think they wanna make the payments at a cheaper cost, and, and, and look at the, you know, pick meals off the, the, to you do one for grammar school, one for high school?
We, we, well, I have to work with each town individually, because we know that town, that they're, oh, okay. There's people in high school.
Yeah.
You offer pizza, that's what my child's gonna eat every day.
And I don't think the kids.
For grammar school, I might be a little more concerned. I don't think it's a high school.
That's a good point.
Right.
The concern that, that we're talking about is, much like using an ATM, if it's not your bank, an ATM fee every time you, you use it, you pay your dollar ninety-five, or two dollars, or fifty, and if we use the system that we have now, and we pay for one meal, we're paying a dollar ninety-five fee to pay with a credit card. If we pay for two months, we're still paying a dollar ninety-five fee to pay with a credit card. And that's what the concern, that's what the problem is. Do the parent, will the parents pay a dollar ninety-five to put three, six, or nine months on, on the account? Will they pay the one ninety-five?
And it also has the capability for us to use it to do our sports fees, so, but the problem with that is, if it's not lunch, I pay ten percent. So, if you're paying an eighty-five dollar fee, you gotta pay eighty-fifty to pay it online. I don't think anyone's gonna do that.
So, I, um, you were the consultant?
I am.
So, you're, you're a hundred and twenty-five dollars an hour? Are you charging us to be here tonight?
I'm not.
Thank you. So.
It's the pleasure of your company.
Uh, bless you, bless you, and, and I, and I mean you no personal offense, but I have a hard time seeing how you can possibly be worth the money, and, uh, so.
Tell us, tell us what you really think.
Phil, come on.
What you're paying for is the expertise and the oversight. I'm not part of the organization, so the big thing that I'm able to do is look at it from the outside, and make recommendations without, without anybody's toes, and come at you with, here's what I would do, this is my recommendation, this is not a permanent commitment. I'm not gonna be earning a hundred and twenty-five dollars an hour for twelve months, or five days a week. This is a short-term arrangement, the meeting committee make recommendations for you, and maybe we'll end up doing something like follow-up with a day a month as an implementer, something along those lines, but it's a commitment, a really careful.
Yeah, so I, I get what you.
And, at this point, I'm also doing the job of the food service director, and as Patty points out, there are no SOPs in place at all, there is nothing to direct the next person when they come in, so when we are able to hire someone, you'll know that you, you do this on Monday, or you do this once a month, or you follow this procedure to accomplish this task, but right now, there's been absolutely nothing, and Patty and I look at each other and shrug our shoulders, so that won't happen to the next person.
So, I, I, I get, my, my, my thing is that I don't see how the course of action you have selected, in going the consultant route, and then hiring somebody, is reasonably calculated to achieve the objectives that you want, which is to have people buy more lunch, and for it to cost less. That, that, because you're forest, you're, you're forestalling the inevitable. We ultimately have to hire a food service director, that has a budget, and has to make the budget. But the, the, the cushion, like, I imagine she, this wasn't budgeted for a consultant for food service. So, what's, what it's coming out of is, the difference in salary that was assessed for the previous food versus what we anticipate hiring the replacement for. So, that spread is what you're paying them.
So, look back at it again, nobody ever did a budget for school lunch. There's been no budget, that's why we lose seventy-seven thousand, because there's no budget to say, "You can't go over this amount." The person who is in the, our previous administrations in food service, didn't do budgeting.
And there hasn't, and there hasn't been oversight, as far as going in, we're not just forestalling it, other will hire a person, we're preparing to have a person have success when they come on board.
And figuring out who we need. We don't know, we, we have, we have no idea who we need to hire. Flori's gonna help us design a job description, so we can go out and figure out who it is we need here.
I don't, I don't know what success looks like, but I know it doesn't look like three kinds of frozen pizza, five days a week, for kids, that's.
That's frozen, it's fresh.
What kind of a citizens are we turning out that just eat pizza, nothing but pizza?
We're not just offering, we're not just offering your pizza, that's one option. Before, they got one option, now they're getting three to four options.
And, and, and this whole thing is, this whole thing, what, what, what we've done, so our foods, this has already happened, the changes have already been made in our elementary schools, the food service directors have been told that their pay has been cut.
Hours have been cut.
Hours have been cut, compensation has been cut, and that, um, that's already been done. So, and, and the idea, like, you're replacing, say, French toast made by hand, three hundred pieces, or whatever, with frozen French toast. It is frozen, you're rehitting frozen stuff.
I need to speak to what you're talking about. The recommendations that my colleague Jim Halstead made in that proposal, were using standard statistics for food service operation, and typically, a food service worker is able to produce between fifteen and twenty-two meals per man-hour. So, for every hour that I work, I'm able to produce fifteen or twenty-two man-hours, fifteen or fifteen or twenty-two meals for my time. Here, most of your schools, including Frontier, were producing about six meals per man-hour. So, when we looked at our labor budget, the labor budget was very much out of line with the cost of food, and you were making the frozen products then, and now we are making the fresh products, and we have less staff. So, we've made some very gentle cuts compared to the recommendation that Jim had made originally, in the hope that the improved food quality, and bringing in more customers, would offset the cuts that we made in the staffing. The staffing cuts have been very gentle, much less than what was recommended in the proposal, and the food is now more fresh food, more food made from scratch, on-site.
All right, that's not what the students that have spoken to me have said, but, um, I'll take your, your word for it. The, the thing about all of this, is that this money that's being spent on consultant, had we just hired somebody, before you got the consultant, if you just hired somebody, given them a budget, and then you would've had that money as a cushion for, to, to enable the person to succeed, and enable the person to do their own techniques. Most of the things in that, in that five, that report that we paid five thousand dollars for, most of the things in that report, um, they're ideas, they're techniques, what you're trying is ideas and techniques. The person in charge of the program whom we hire should have their own techniques and ideas.
I recognize them if we don't know what we're looking for. Nobody here knows what a food service director's supposed to do.
We need to set that person up to have success, and as you're saying, go hire somebody. I can't tell you the lying den that I've been thrown into. Patty can speak to what's been happening. You have to have a very qualified person. I have an MBA, and I'm a registered dietitian, and I am really struggling with some of the things that are going on down there. You are not gonna be able to afford to hire someone with my credentials and my experience. So, I'm trying to pave the road, and lay out the framework, so when we get a person who can do the job, there'll be steps for them to follow, there'll be directions, and there'll be some references that they can follow up on. We're trying to set them up for success. You can't just go grab somebody off the street and say, "Hey, you, come on in and run our food service program, we've got a great program here, all you have to do is follow a zillion new healthy hunger for kids requirements, pass the Desi inspections, and satisfy all the kids, and you'll be successful." I'm sorry, I don't think that's a practical approach.
The long-term savings that you are realizing are, are being achieved by cutting the pay, with the compensation, the hours, however you wanna put it, the people that were making seventeen dollars an hour, are now making fourteen dollars an hour.
No, no, no one's, no one's wage has been cut. We have eliminated breaks that were not.
Less hours, Phil.
Less hours. We've trimmed hours very gently, for the most part.
And may I say, in the team, Flori, that the report did say that compared to everyone around us, our, our rates were high, that we paid high compared to everyone else in this, in the area.
It's all relative, but. And no, no one's wages have been cut, hours have been trimmed, and there were employees who were taking break time on the clock that they were not entitled to, and there was no supervision to realize that people were taking paid, paid break time that they were not entitled to.
That doesn't sound good.
No.
Did, did, who's, whose responsibility is that?
Your food service director, who has just left here. So, now.
Who does the food service director report to?
In the past, probably no one, Phil. In the future? In the future?
That's what we're trying to fix.
So, who does the food service director report to? Patty, or the superintendent?
Patty, and then the, Patty's the direct. She does bus transportation, she does food service, so it's, but we, when I came on last year, it was pretty much status quo for fourteen years, and Darius and I, Patty and I, spent a lot of time working with that person, saying, "We need this, we need to do this, how about this, what about ideas?" All for naught. And so, what we said was, "We can't pay you for the summer," because we needed to make cuts, so we said, "We can't pay you for the summer, there's no food being served, there's no cooking going on, so we can't pay you," and that person decided that they were going to retire.
And, and that person was not enforcing the policies that we're talking about, that are now being enforced. So, now people take the breaks that they're entitled to, they don't take breaks whenever they want. One more, and, and that is just, this, you know, this came up every month last year, every, almost every month, and, and I was always, you know, this is a constant subject of, at my dinner table, and, and I'm the one that brought up the term prison food to describe what was here, and I'm the one that talked about, you know, the mystery meat, internet memes of the Frontier students that I've seen, and, and that, when, when I would bring these things up, my recollection is that the superintendent and the business manager would defend the taste of the food, and defend the quality of the food.
I never eat a split of a bit of food, I have food allergies, I do not care, I would never try to defend, or honor, or anything else, I have no opinion, and never have.
And.
And I said that the, you're working on it, and that the people working in the kitchen are wonderful, wonderful, kind, hardworking people. And I think that your issue is being addressed by having an outside person come in and look for what changes need to be made, so I actually think that you stated the cause, and they have responded to you.
Well, you're not an interested party.
Lynn, you're next. Oh, I'm, Lynn. Go ahead, Lynn.
At what point are we gonna be hiring at all time for the service person? How long are you planning on?
As soon as we get a vote from the school committee, whether we, our father, we're going to be doing it together.
Okay. And I'm assuming that in the course of hiring somebody, we're going to be looking at that person's ideas of what they want to do here, right? And so far, whether or not they take this lady's recommendations or not, these people that we interview will have their own ideas of how it should be run. And nothing is hard to stone, we've told all of the employees that, we've told all the kids that, that food service changes, and tastes change, and you need to be flexible.
But the thing is, that point is that part of the hindrance process will be for them to give us a sample menu, they will need to present a sample menu for us, so we can evaluate their.
And I think that was part of the point, that why, what you were doing is really good for my, my kids all year, who like the improvements in the lunch, whoever we hire are going to have their own ideas of what we should do.
Absolutely.
And I think that's what you were trying to get, not that you are not valuable, but that the people going forward, the people that we hire are going to have their own ideas.
Have any.
So, we're going to have to choose what's planned, not just what person, but what plan we want to have.
With no question.
We also are fairly strictly governed by the helping of the kids app, and our reliance on the federal reimbursement, so there is some structure that we have to follow, but certainly, we wanna hire someone who's gonna fit with all the sorts of creative ideas, and be able to brainstorm and interact with the kids, we want somebody that's gonna be creative, and I think that that's the problem that you were talking about, that the same old, same old trick happening, and happening, and happening, and that's not what the kids want. I'm sure all of you who have children at home know that that's not what they want these days, that you have to be constantly changing, and responding to their taste, and clearly, the successful candidate will have lots of good ideas that they'll perform, that could be implemented.
So, you were just.
I was filling in until we find a program that we want to go with. I would, I don't think we're looking for a program, I think we're looking for a person who can come up with some creative ideas, and I am assuming that I will be involved in this process to help evaluate whether an idea's gonna be feasible or not, and will be there.
It's more that we're gonna set up some standard practices and procedures, which don't exist now, and then hopefully, the person, when we interview them, will think that the standard practices and procedures that were put in place, based on Flori's experience, and Mr. Halstead's recommendations, that they're gonna merge, and it's not so much like Mr. Smith was saying, "Don't serve pancakes with a side of broccoli," it's more that they understand how to operate a food service.
We're building a foundation for them to specialize and refine, but there's no foundation right now to build on, so we're gonna build a foundation, and then they can fine-tune it, and put the decorations on the, on the surface, but we don't have anything to build on right now, there's nothing, so we're working on getting a base together that they can build on.
Bob?
I listened to the presentation, I think the hiring of the consultant is, together with this, has been very positive in what's happening going forward. I have a couple of concerns going forward, is if we're gonna share the costs of the four, the four of the towns, that it's gonna be based upon the number of October one enrollments, on the allocation of the cost, so that Frontier's not picking up the whole thing. In the past, I think Frontier paid the former director's salary, and someone picked up part of it, Boykin picked up part of it, but predominantly, Frontier paid the whole thing, and I.
And not based on anything.
I know, that's my, that's my point.
Not based on any percentage, we just ran the numbers.
So, I think we're going forward, I hope that the game plan gets spelled out, so everybody understands it, and we get the kids to buy the program, as well as the faculty, so we don't lose seventy thousand dollars a year, because we can't afford it.
We'll be paying that, we'll be paying that in consultant fees in the first two months.
No, we're not, we're not gonna pay that.
I have that.
Judy, you've been waiting patiently.
I don't have anything new to add. I don't have anything new to add, so I'm not gonna follow.
What's the timeframe? Probably, you're gonna vote October fifth, the fifth, Thursday the fifth.
And what's the daily consultant fees that we're accruing?
Hundred and twenty-five dollars an hour.
Times, how many hours, every day?
She's been working ten, eleven hours a day.
Thousand bucks a day. And the belief is we can sustain this through October?
We're hoping, we're looking to see if we can... I'm on it, Phil, I'm watching it. I know I still have to have salary left to pay somebody after this is done, I understand. But you have to understand, both Laurie and I have been working 11-hour days trying to get the kitchen open.
I know you have, and I'm, my criticism is not at all an impugnation. It's just, this is tactics and choices, and I don't, this is, this boggles my mind that we're spending this much.
Get to October 5th. Just for that, yeah.
Phil, do you have, you still have kids in the school?
Oh, yeah.
What are they saying about the food? Do they buy school lunch, or do they bring their lunch?
I, there's nothing positive that they have to say, that she has to say about the food, nothing, just...
You have kids, right, Judy?
Yeah.
How, anything positive from your end of the things?
I have one that brings lunch every day, and I have one that I have been trying to sell, because I've been showing them, I've been considering showing them at the school, showing them that they're different, suggesting they try it, like I'm making native stuffs. I mean, I think it will, I think it will work, because there has my conversation about, about the physical changes and the presentation changes.
I just texted my son, said, "How's the new school food?" He said, "Not bad, not bad at all." I'm really sorry about that quote even. He said, "Much better," and then capital letters, "No pancakes and broccoli." Three smiley faces, so...
You guys thought I was kidding, didn't you?
It's so funny.
I did find it on the menu, it really did be correct.
I mean, I think it's something, I mean, I eat at, Waitney, at the end of the year in June, I happen to spend a half a day at the school, and I had some of their school lunch, and I was very happy with what two people put together for probably 80 meals or whatever, and I thought it was very good, homemade soup, you know, and I thought it was, I thought it was really good. If anybody gets a chance, you know, maybe we ought to go to the elementary schools if you have a net, or come to Frontier and have a meal sometime, and see for yourself if, if, you know.
Absolutely. We welcome your comments and suggestions, and that applies to the kids also. I try to be out in the dining room during the meal service and have them come up to me and talk to me about, have you thought about doing this, or I really liked that, and I think that interaction is valuable. I don't have all the answers, I can brief overview and I can make suggestions, but we're very interested, you're going to be here, so you need to be satisfied with the program.
Judy, you have a question?
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Cindy has a question.
I've been trying to get a question, I raise my hand, please.
You don't have any kids left in the school?
That's not, well, I have a husband who's a priest who goes to pound my grammar school every time we have turkey dinner.
Aw, man, he's lucky.
They send a vending invite, and then he sits with the different kids, and it's a wonderful community situation, and I'm hoping that they don't lose their turkey dinners, because that would be really sad. So he may have been there a lot. But my questions are, I hope that we have kept the employees in line that we're talking brainiacs this year, that these are very hardworking people, and they come in every day, and then they find out they're going to, through a letter, they're going to be cut down their hours, and that was traumatic when they know that they're working hard, and I don't know about the end where they're taking illegal breaks and that type of stuff, but we do need to keep in mind that our cafeteria workers are not only really nice people, but they're very hardworking people.
They are part of our team, and we have worked hard to explain to them now, they did get a bomb dropped on them last, and it's unfortunate that it happened the way that it did, but we're working very closely with them to explain what methods we're looking at and why it's important. And I think that they do understand, and they are not just hardworking, they're pretty skilled. I've been very pleasantly surprised that they really want to cook and know how to cook, don't want to open boxes of frozen food. So we are working very hard to incorporate them as part of the team so that they understand the solution as well.
And as you said, there was a bomb dropped on them, and as you know, if that happened to you, you would still have that little residual like now what's going to happen. So going forth, I think it's nice that they're being included in not the choices, but at least the process, because again, they're very skilled people. And I would like to know, we never really talked, and I can't, I read that thing when it came first, so it's been a couple of weeks, so we were like $77,000 in the red. Okay. So my question is, I'm not saying that that's all that people aren't paying, but I know people don't pay for their lunches. So how do we go about trying to collect those monies from people who don't actually pay? And do we have a number that you can assign to that?
Two issues. At Frontier, everybody pays. Nobody owes us money after a parent deals.
Right. Do we have a system of collecting that money?
Yes, we do. And it would want to make it better if they added an online payment, so parents, so they don't have to send the money to the kids, they can do, they can do online payments.
So do I have to pay for last year if I did inform a parent?
Okay, yeah. Frontier, we don't have to have that problem. If you don't have money, you don't eat.
Right. But now it's a five-school situation coming forward.
You don't have money?
So is it going to be, is it going to be one menu? Is all five schools going to have the same food every day?
Most likely, they go with a very similar menu. And to go back and answer your original question, the principals have all received a balance due report, and the balance due report includes money that was due from last year, as well as current charges, and all of the principals are adept in that. In fact, and I talked about maybe creating a contest where you can sort of collect the largest percentage of past due accounts, but, so that they can send out a friendly reminder email to update people, and then maybe a letter, and also to investigate whether or not some families have problems, who isn't paying and doesn't realize that they can call an application at any point throughout the year if something's changed. So we're trying to really gear our hands on it and staying on top of it weekly as opposed to halfway through the year, or, or yet, at the end of the year, "By the way, you owe us $500," or Patty mentioned a case that it's larger than that. We want them to know that right now you owe us $35, and not wait until they owe us $500. But as of right now, it's not true. There's probably down the road it's going to be if it's all five schools included.
You don't embarrass a kid that doesn't have any money.
This is not the kid's problem, this is parents' problem. Kid's energy, not being involved in this process.
What do, what do you do with a child who comes to the line, gets his meal, and then he discovers that there's no money on his card? What happens to him?
At the elementary level, children are fed, and there's no mention of that. And then the principal follows up.
What happens here? They don't eat, right? She just, Patty just said...
All students are fed.
No money?
Cheese sandwich?
It's tasty, I'm correct. I loaned them money off my account.
And Darius and I actually were talking about whether there's a clever way that we could incorporate it into our Meals Plus system so that it would go through as a charge against a general account, and we're working with them to see if there's a possibility...
It's more of a middle school issue, because high school students will borrow from each other to buy lunch. So it's middle school that I, you know, Laurie and I have had a conversation that no student goes unfed. They don't have money going through the line. Without me, Scott dredged is the same thing. We put forward the money because our system doesn't allow us to go into the red, and so, you know, we have it that way, and that way, it's also an accountability to a person rather than a system, because they will back up a debt until you call the parents and try to get that in. So anybody who does go over, if there's any, you know, we also walk the lunchroom to make sure everybody's eating. We inquire if they're not, if they, you know, if there's an issue, that kind of thing. And so this is middle school again. High school, you know, they have a little more responsibility free from that area, so...
Thank you for doing it. That's elegant and generous and lovely, really nice.
And it's not the children's problem. Children should not be part of the discussion at all.
Good question. Are the tech schools in William Community College, they have culinary programs, are they getting involved in trying to train people to work in these cafeterias?
No. I don't know. It's a separate restaurant.
Just for restaurants, but not training them to, to take care of the needs of these schools, and that's worth it.
I think it's a great opportunity for culinary students, and I'm not familiar with programs written in this area. I've been doing a fair number of jobs in West Church and Patty in New York, that's where the company that we all work for was based originally. And the culinary program at the tech school where I was working, I was working in school last year, where they had a tech school and regular high school and several elementary schools, and the culinary program there was teaching the kids what they needed to do to produce food for the school lunch programs, because it isn't just school lunch food, it's healthy food for everybody, and it's going to apply across the board, whether they work in a restaurant or whether they work in the school cafeteria, to understand how to reduce the sodium, how to reduce the sugar, how to provide more fresh, healthy food, something that they certainly were focusing on, including selling food back to the school lunch program, and that's a good idea.
Well, because the tech school, Grand County Tech, which all four of our towns belong to, is a very good program. They have outstanding culinary program. And Smith School has the same thing, and, and the community college has a big culinary program, and I think one of their focuses now is training some of the students to work in the new casino. With the food there.
Sure.
So, I mean, I just didn't know if there was something, and you might be able to get some co-op students from the tech schools, where they might get some credits or whatever.
We do, however, have a shortage of substitutes. So if anyone's interested in substituting in the school lunch program, please contact Raja Root, that you're in Mayoff.
Starving for them, and our ladies are not taking advantage. We're talking about a woman who's, her husband is having heart surgery, and she's told me the day she needs to have off. I need to have two or three people, I can all fill in that day.
We have no one.
And at the elementary school, we know someone's going to be out, and I actually went over and worked the line myself that one of the days, because I felt it would be a good experience because of what was going on, that there was no one to call, so we really are looking for support. Grandmothers would be a great fit, in my opinion, but...
We could pay more, and then we could get people.
Thank you.
Pay more.
Thank you very much, Chris.
Thank you.
Throw more money.
Thank you.
I don't have anything. Do we have anything from the collaborative?
They don't read until we have done.
Okay, thank you. Darius, would you like to?
And outside of all this, the kids are going to class.
Woo-hoo!
They're being educated. It's kind of funny, you sit here, and we haven't really talked about education much. Let me just take a step back. We've a lot of great things moving forward right now. We had a great smooth start to the school year. As you know, through stuff that's, and others, your parents, you don't have parents, and you have seen it, that we have gone to a one-to-one Chromebook school for the high school. So we had reached a point where we made some decisions about, during the summer months, about buying new technology, and we were about, I would say about 70% there to being one-to-one with Chromebooks, and going the last 30% just made sense. A lot of schools, I won't use the word a lot, many schools are, I won't use the word "many," schools are moving in that direction. Chromebooks are very inexpensive, they're about $200, they run off the Chrome platform, and it allows us to give each student the ability to anywhere there's a wireless access to be able to log on, be able to do work. The middle school still has a one-to-one model, but they leave their Chromebooks at school. The transportation goes back and forth. Right now, they start each day, they pick them up, they go to all their classes, their last class, they drop them back off at the charging stations. So the rollout of this, you know, right now, we are, in fact, we have a faculty meeting today, we're going to be surveying the faculty about where we can improve on the uses of them and that kind of thing, but, you know, that's basically a wrap. And so if there's any, I know I wrote a very short amount there, but I assume there'd be questions on that. But what's neat with it, before, is the GoGuardian software that goes with it. And so basically, the GoGuardian software allows teachers to track where students are on their computers during the school day, and only during the school day. And so if you have a class in front of you, you can have a list of where all the kids are in that one. You also can lock their screens and say, let's say I'm teaching English, and I have this great article I wanted to read, you can send it out to all their, all their computers in front of them, and only that, can only read that during that time period. So it's a, it's a little bit more than just giving everybody a free-flowing internet device. They also have their Chrome accounts and their Google Gmail accounts, where they, Google Drive accounts, so they can store all their stuff. They can leave their Chromebook at school, they can go home and use the computer at home, or any other library device or any of that kind of thing, as long as they can have internet and log on to Google, they can access their stuff. And so the GoGuardian software is really a real good teaching school that's new this year. Middle school teachers are like, "Why didn't we have this last year?" Apologize to them, but it is a great thing that we're rolling on. So teachers are being trained on that, actually, classroom, which actually is taught today. So we're catching up, get the materials out, the Chromebooks out, and now we're getting in all the pieces there. So it's kind of a, as I explain to the kids, it's not a toy, it's a school device, the same as a textbook. We can give you something to go surf the web at home and have a good, you know, that school's tracking, and get tracked where you go on the event.
I just, the recorder piece that was done about that, I thought was maybe the best piece I've read about Frontier that I could remember. I know it impressed the editorial board that they had, there was an editorial a couple of days after that, and that, that kind of publicity is wonderful. So thank you.
So, I mean, we're very excited about it. It was a lot of work, and I got to compliment the IT department to roll out, they're not having done it before, all the X's and O's of getting those rolled out and tracking them and doing that kind of thing. We are also offering an insurance policy. This is where we kind of went back and forth, some schools mandate an insurance policy, that, you know, if you're going to get a device, you have to sign up for the insurance. We did not. We have an optional insurance policy, it's $20, covers the device for the year for accidental damage to it and loss. And so it's a good thing, I didn't actually get that in place the last Thursday, because we were going back and forth with the insurance company, trying to get that as low as possible. So that's being put out there. Open house, we're also going to have a table to explain that to parents as well, that that option's out there. So I think it's, again, I think it's probably the most exciting thing that's educationally that's happening for all students this year. Questions on?
I just want to compliment you on attracting more school choice children. Right now, we have, the numbers are correct, approximately 25% of our students choose children.
Overall, our enrollment overall is up by, I think, 19 this year. It also has to do with, we had a very small junior class, and we rolled, and senior class last year, so we rolled those out, and we bring in bigger classes. Some of that has to do with that, so I'm not going to take a lot of credit there, I'll take it when I get to earn it, but there has been more school choice this year in the high school than we've had in previous years.
You know, I can go to some kids who want to gravitate toward, I think, the education system. And, you know, I just, you know, we couldn't run the programs at Frontier without that balance, without the money to come to the school choice children that fund some of this stuff that we have, that those schools don't have. It's a delicate balance, and it's working, I don't want to jinx it, but, it's 25% of my Frontier matters, I think.
Thank you. Another exciting thing I got to talk about, I know everybody's tired, so I'll talk fast and throw me out or listen in. We, I've been meeting with Teresa Jones, who's a Southern resident, a professor at GCC, we've been improving our relationship with GCC, and really talking about the transition of those students who are going on to community college, and how we can improve, there's concern that they say they're going to enroll and then they don't enroll. And so we're trying to improve that relationship. In that, those discussions, and also with Sarah Mitchell, we developed, GCC's going to teach its first class here on those early release Fridays for sophomores, juniors, and seniors for college credit, and they're doing it for free. It's a business course, it's a business class that we don't offer here. They just had an information session tonight, and there were about, I think, 12 parents went to the information session. I think we have, in the low twenties, kids signed up for it, and so they're going to be taking, you know, their first, their first college class here, getting credits for college, not credits for Frontier. It's an outside offering that we're offering here, again, trying to get students to experience the college experience, and also improve their resumes to college, it's all, it's all good, whereas I can say, they do have to take the act in place there and all that, so when they go on to junior college, uh, community college later on, they don't have to do that, our community college later on, they don't have to do that. Again, once they take the AccuPlacer, they're in good shape. Very exciting stuff. We're also planning for early release Fridays, we're also looking at putting in a Life Guard course and a CPR course and even adding more to that. So we're trying to do some of these, some of these extra things that students, that we see the need for in the community during that. These are all things that are not taught by teachers because the teachers are in their professional development range. Another exciting thing is the English department had students read a live over the summer. And they are bringing, we are going to do a telecast discussion with one of the survivors that's talked about in the book. And they're going to bring the kids in, you know, obviously, pre-prep questions and really have an online discussion, I'll say, but in the theater with this person. That's going to happen on the 29th. That's great. And then just released this day, today, the eighth grade is going to lead a community fundraising effort for Little Cypress, Mercerville. I pass around the pictures of their school. They are outside of Houston, kind of closer to Louisiana, and they were affected by Hurricane Harvey. And we have a connection to their school through Polly Wozniak, a teacher at her school, through her connection, we got a connection with the principal. And we saw what their school needs. It's really, I think, where one school can relate to another, we're going to try to get supplies and funds and supplies to send to this particular school, to the middle school. And if we can get it growing big enough, we'll even try to scoop in, maybe a high school in that district. You can see where that's their school underwater and so they can use just about anything. So that information, that's fresh off the press today. The teachers put it together today, they're releasing it to the students tomorrow, but so hopefully you'll see me pushing out stuff to the, through email and that kind of thing. The last thing I have is handbooks. Okay, all handbooks and policies are online now. Okay? So these are the extra middle school handbooks, but I've always provided them in the years past. So if you want one, I'll give you one at the end of the meeting. If you don't want one, you can always refer to our policy handbooks online. And these can go back to any new students to get them. So if you want one, some people are, and some people actually like to agenda, some people want it right when they have school committee meetings inside of.
Any equations in?
What's that? Are the equations corrected in the back? I hope so, because I'm not doing that again. And then I have some upcoming dates, you know, as you can see, coming ahead.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions? Okay.
Thank you. It's late and I will be brief, but thank you all for staying and listening. Except for Bob. Thank you, Lori. First one I want to talk about, it's not on my list, but it is something I want to talk about. I have been meeting regularly with four county administrators, Sutherland, Wakey, Deerfield, and Conlake. And we have been, we started meeting to discuss the draft of the, there was a report on facilities used that was recommended and voted on at the cost of $12,000 for the district that was requested two years ago. And we still haven't gotten anything. The draft, we went through blow-by-blow, we had about 60 recommendations. We met in June, we asked the UMass person if they would see about making changes and do some face-to-face, real-time interviews and things like that, getting primary sources for their thing, their report, seeing if that's that information and how the information, you know, we've come forward there. Yeah. He said he would take care of it in that last week in August and didn't have any of those changes made at the meeting, but he did have a syllabus for a course that he was wanting to be teaching this fall that would incorporate everything that we had asked for, town, you know, different meetings with parents and interviews with select people and obviously. In discussion with the team, the four county administrators, I, we decided that, we talked about the lack of communication in the two-year span that we've been waiting for the project and the fact that it was probably originally conceived with the thought of moving from Wakey, Blue School to here that we've already thought had it done in the meantime, that perhaps we didn't, at this point, feel the need to invest $12,000 in this project anymore. There were some changes done to the draft and, but we decided that, the fact that the people who initially asked for the draft, most of them are not, the town administrators have all, they're all different. And the superintendents changed and I think the needs have changed, the focus of the needs have changed. And so I would recommend to you, to the school committee, that we don't invest, we don't go forward and invest the $12,000. And my understanding is, my sense is that perhaps the towns are going to invest near $2,000 in this report. It's kind of, it's kind of lost its urgency.
What happens to the money that was already assessed?
That's the number we spent. Will we terminate the contract? Or whatever?
Yes.
We terminated the clause.
You make your motion.
We all kind of paid for it, so we should terminate the contract for clause because you didn't perform.
Can we get the money back?
They paid.
We won't spend it.
We have a payment.
It's all second half.
Everybody understand what's going on?
Yeah.
So was that report also including community buildings? That there was going to be an assessment of everything? And it came out of a conversation about low enrollment in elementary schools and the schools have lots of space and, you know, maybe some senior citizen services could be moved into a part of a school. And that, that was the intent of it, to look at all the space in all the communities.
The long range, it came out of the long range planning.
That's right. Yeah.
And then we had tried to get a state grant. And then right when we were about to get the grant, the grants would fill up. And so one of the towns recommended using UMass.
Right.
And then this body has been in Congress since like fiscal '14 or '15.
It's been a while.
And the report was, and even, you know, was disappointing in passing. There was no innovation in it, there were no new ideas. It was kind of a regurgitation of stuff we already do. The buildings look like, the size would, but there was no innovation that I could see. And again, it's taken over two years to.
Is this, is this going to end gracefully?
I don't know.
Who was the professor?
You ask somebody to do a report, he does the report, you don't like what he told you, so you're not going to pay him?
No.
It wasn't what we asked for. It wasn't responsive to our request and to our agreement.
To be fair, there were no deadlines or timelines in the agreement.
Hmm. Fatal flaw.
Yes. There was a lack of communication in progress that was a concern for the towns. The good, the, one of the focuses of the report, of course, was being Blue School and that's no longer a priority, it's been over two years.
I'm surprised that they gave us anything without getting their money first.
Well, it was a draft and we're not using it. So we've never gotten the final report? No, it's not done. It's. On a report that we asked for.
That's very strange.
Right. It's not done.
Has he sent any invoice? Has he requested?
He hasn't fulfilled what we asked. And then when we sat together as a team and we went through blow-by-blow saying, the information is not here, this is, you know, this is newspaper reports, this is, you know, stuff that's public records, that's that information that we paid for, that we paid for, that we already have. The focus.
But then you talked about he brought a syllabus going forward, so is he think he's still working on it?
No.
Through coursework?
No, he knows that.
He knows.
The four towns and myself are recommending we don't go forward.
Okay.
The bottom line is he told us in 60 days that he would get, he would do interviews with select people, he would do interviews with administrators in the schools, he would do this and that. And then, well, he couldn't do it because he didn't have student researchers or whatever. But now he's going to do it with this class. And I just, personally, I just felt that, well, superintendently, I felt that $12,000 for this report at this time really isn't.
Mr. Chairman, part of the information, I believe, was the Florida State Department found a year ago in order not to pay their portion. Okay? But at this time, of course, we draw my motion and ask in substitute, give our motion, then we refer this to counsel. So we don't make any mistake if we start a fire?
So we'll pay the lawyer instead of paying the guy.
He's on retainer. Maybe he can get us some money for pain and suffering.
Can we just have a conversation and see what the expectation is on this bill? Maybe it's a, I'm happy that this, happy to part ways and, you know, you owe me $500 for copying.
You can make it go worse before you talk to the lawyer.
Yeah, yeah.
You may also feel that it was a failed thing.
Change it to further review in that council.
Sounds good. I second whatever was going on.
To see if he'll present.
His call off, I don't remember.
Well, he did.
Oh, he did?
It was very painful, so we all sat there and we were all basically telling him, you need to pull out of this, and he just didn't get it.
We have a motion and a second to ask him gradually to rescind. All in favor?
I wouldn't be like that, I could do it anyway. Okay.
You want to go up the other way now?
No, I'm going to abstain from the vote. Because I know the guy.
Ah.
I don't understand that one.
I don't like it.
Give it one.
You don't want it.
Sorry, boy.
No, I'm just, I didn't see your hand up, I had to ask.
You understand it better.
So, thank you. Thanks for that. Our opening day, this school year again, ordered beautifully. We had an opening day breakfast that was provided by our food service.
That takes a break.
We had breakfast, scrambled eggs, sausage, homemade or mukka.
No broccoli?
Very positive, no, very positive remarks. The administrative, administrative team and I met last week to discuss the possibility of piloting a Blizzard Bag program in our district for this school year. After reviewing documents and information from other districts who engaged in the program last year, we decided that we would take this school year to do more research and to develop a quality protocol that would meet the specific needs of our students. So we're not ready to move forward with the Blizzard Bag program yet. We decided that we would take more time to look into it and really button it up and be able to inform everyone of what, you know, before we even ask if they're interested. There's so many questions, so we decided that we would wait and see how the others move.
But the unions on board, we have this discussion.
No, we wanted to move forward to actually survey all the teachers, all the parents, everybody. And, yeah, before we even do that, but we don't even want to make that because there's too many questions. We haven't really answered that. So we want to watch our neighbors in Orange, Hay Play. And we did look at a lot of data from them. And again, people, they love it or they don't. So, and we don't feel the need to jump into the game right now. I'll be more visible in the building this year. Darius and I make plans to meet at the classrooms every two weeks. My goal is to be actually be in the schools every week. So that's, that's been working out really well. Again, my first year is to go slow, learn what I understand, the traditions and the values, and to make a vision and strategic plan moving forward, which I, which we've done this, this summer, working with the Advent team. And we have a strategic plan with our vision to present to the joint school committees on April 56th of last year. I'm saying April, I think October, because this is our year, sorry, October 50th. So thank you very much.
Bob?
Mr. Chairman, before we adjourn, I would like to thank Cindy for her outstanding.
Is this for, is this for you or is this just I maybe go?
And now I'm sitting. Charles, sell it.
They didn't give you a baseball bat.
No, I moved that we get a plaque made for it.
I moved that we don't get a plaque.
How many years have you been in the school committee?
Not as many as.
No. No one's been as much as them. How many years you been in?
Um.
Over 10?
Oh, yes.
Yes, 13.
I think it's time for you to go to the conference and get a plaque there. Yeah.
If you give me a plaque, it'll just warm me for a while. Uh-oh, should put it in snow.
Move to adjourn, Mr. Chairman.
I want to say this, though, we gave him a chair more.
Second.
I'm not leaving. We just have to.
So go to motion, is second adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.